It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this Madison City Council meeting of November the ninth, the order. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
President.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Nestor. Councilman Gregor.
Here.
Mayor Mojer.
Present.
There will be note four members here present and one absent, Councilman Nestor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas, would you like to lead us in prayer, please?
We'll bow our heads just for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you now for this opportunity to come before you with this council meeting, and we pray that you just bind us all together on one accord, that we give us the wisdom, knowledge, understanding to continue to move the city forward, and that we just move peacefully together, united, and stand together for the good of Madison. In Jesus' name we pray, and thank you. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation undergone indubitable with liberty and justice for all. The minutes have been previously distributed to council members. I would like somebody to make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous session, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the last council meeting on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraphus, Twenty-Nine Rex Boulevard, page two. You're going to apply for a TAN note. Is this for this year, or is it for January twenty twenty-four?
It's next year, honey.
Okay, and what is the amount?
Five hundred thousand.
Okay, I thought we were only in a whole one hundred and ninety-two thousand at the or...
We still have January, February, March, and probably April until taxes come in, so we need something to carry us over.
Well, you got the garbage coming in.
Garbage is not, I am adamantly not to be using the garbage for everything else except for what it's intended for. That's my personal opinion, but...
So you're gonna have three hundred thousand left to handle these other bills, then?
Or less. We don't know how, we don't know what they'll be. I can't tell you.
Do you know if this TAN note is the same as far as interest rate compared to notes higher?
I think it went up to six point four seven percent.
Six point four seven, wow.
And it was like five something before.
Actually, it's yet to be set for sure.
It, 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 and this means what, as long as you pay before six months? If you go beyond six months, it goes even higher?
No.
That's a, the proposal that CFS Bank sent over has a six point five percent interest rate, fixed rate.
It's paid, it is paid thirty percent of the real estate money as it comes in against the loan. So in the period of about the first three months, you've got enough to pay it off.
Okay.
But we have the whole year to pay it.
Any other questions on agenda items? Let's move on then. Correspondence. We did receive a, a letter here from Reverend Michael Crookston of the Epiphany Church. It says, Dear Mayor Ron Mozer and Council, we recently had our annual parish festival. We had a wonderful response from the people of our city, as well as neighboring, neighboring committee, communities. Although we handled the parking situation with no issues, we had many people comment on the condition of Evergreen and Ross Draver streets. Most of these streets have, get a great deal of traffic, and it seems that nothing has been done to them for quite some time. With all the funerals that take place in the cemeteries, many people come from different parts of the county, and I know that I've heard many comments from conditions of the streets. It doesn't give our community a very good reputation as far as good ma, street maintenance is concerned. I do not have the answers to, to what should have been done, but would it be possible at least repair some of the potholes and uneven payments on these streets? I simply wanted to pass this on, what I have heard from the people who came to the festival sincerely yours. At this point, I'd like to ask the solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Prior to this meeting, council did hold the demolition hearing that was scheduled. None of the property owners showed up to appear. All the properties are on tonight's agenda for council to consider. They will have thirty days to appeal to the court if they choose to do so. If not, the notices can then be sent to the County Land Bank to proceed with demolition. Also, I spoke with WEC. We're going to take a look at the city's street excavation ordinance. There were some inconsistent language that some of the contractors who were doing work around the city, and there's been a lot of them, we're going to close up some of those loopholes to make sure the restoration is equal throughout the city. The big thing that I, I think needs to be focused on is kind of the lack of notification to the emergency services, to City Hall, whenever they're shutting down a portion of a street throughout the city. And we need that to include even when they're working on the PennDOT roads, because once they get to the intersection of Fifth Street, they are shutting down those roads. It's impacting traffic. It's impacting business owners, impacting residents. So we need to have some form of notification that, you know, the city can work around ambulance, fire, police all know where they have to go to avoid that. That's all I have for this evening.
Questions will be at the end.
Nobody showed up.
How many, oh?
Um...
Fourteen.
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 Do you want to give your report? I have a few minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask our city treasurer for his report.
Mayor, council, and citizens of Madison. This is my report for the month of October two thousand and twenty-three. Garbage fees current. October received two thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Year-to-date, three hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Budget amount, three hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Delinquent. October, we received five thousand fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Year-to-date, fifty-four thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Budgeted amount, eighty thousand seven hundred and eighty. Amount collected by Portnoy for October, three thousand four hundred and two dollars and eighty cents. Year-to-date, twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and nine cents. Both of these amounts are included in the above what I just read. Penalty in interest, Portnoy. October, one hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Year-to-date, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Budget amount, two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. Parking fees collected for twenty twenty-four. October, fifty-five dollars. Year-to-date, one thousand six hundred and five dollars. Budget amount, one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Total for October, seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Year-to-date, four hundred and two thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Budget amount, four hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. City real estate taxes revenues current October, fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Year-to-date, one million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Budget amount, two million thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. City taxes prior years collected. Nothing for October. Year-to-date, eight thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. Budget amount, five thousand five hundred and three dollars. Total, year-to-date, collected, one million nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand twenty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. City taxes collected by Westmoreland County Tax Plan Bureau. Received nothing this month. Year-to-date, one hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Budget amount, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Total year-to-date taxes, two million one hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Distribution is as follows, as of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. General fund, one million three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Budget amount, one million four hundred thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Debt service, year-to-date, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand thirty-nine dollars and twenty-sense, twenty-seven cents. Budget amount, three hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and nine cents. Library, year-to-date, twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Budget amount, forty thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Parks, year-to-date, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Budget amount, one hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents. Total year-to-date, one million nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand twenty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Budget amount, two million thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Miscellaneous incomes. Real estate transfer tax, October, five thousand twenty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Year-to-date, seven, fifty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Budget amount, eighty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Earned income tax, October, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Year-to-date, five hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven, thirty-four dollars and forty cents. Budget amount, five hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Mercantile tax, nothing this month. Year-to-date, eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Budget amount, twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Local service tax, October, two million, or wait, two hun, two thousand two hundred and four dollars and seven cents. Year-to-date, sixty-one thousand sixty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Budget amount, fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Tax certifications, October, three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Year-to-date, twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Budget amount, twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars and forty, nine hundred and forty dollars. Municipal lien letters, October, two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Year-to-date, fifteen thousand seventy-five dollars. Budget amount, fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Line usage account, nothing in October. Year-to-date, ten thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars. As for the unsecured payments, in the line usage fee, October, seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents. Year-to-date, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents. Total year-to-date, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and forty-five cents. Mayor, we're pretty close to the budget amount, just about on everything. Some of the accounts are already over budget. That concludes my report.
Very good. Does somebody make a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I'd make, make a motion to accept the treasurer's report, as rad.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, any discussion items? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes. This time, I'd like to see if our city controller has a report.
Yes, Mayor. The general fund, salary, federal savings, checking account, bank reconciliation as of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The beginning bank balance as of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Deposits, eighty thousand two hundred and four dollars and five cents. Expenses, four hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. The ending balance as of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, is four hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. The outstanding checks amounted to forty-two thousand two hundred and nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. There are no outstanding deposits. The reconciliation of bank balance to the bank statement was four hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody have any new business they'd like to introduce? Right now, I'm going to give my status report. First off, I'm quite pleased to announce that we opened the bids for Phase Three C of the sewer project. That is, what that amounts to is the lining of the storm drain system that runs along the side of Parenti from Bart's to Schoonmaker. All indications are that this should be less disruptive to its traffic since it is off the side of the road, and we have four lanes of traffic to work with. I don't expect it to be the traffic problem we had on Third Street by any means. This contract is apparently going to be awarded to municipal contractors and ceiling products, M C S P, as the apparent low bidder, in the amount of three million nine hundred and ten thousand and fifty-eight dollars. This brings our total commitment to date for what we've invested in the source sewer system to nine million two hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. It's time that I take action to request the USDA to close out the first of our seven million five hundred thousand dollar loans. In other words, we'll, we'll close that off, move that to the debt service fund, and no longer be responsible for the high interest of PNC Bank as an interim loan. Right now, immediately, M S E, M C S P, the same people are working on the Third Street extension. Starting next week, they're going to be pretty much closing Third Street Extension from Third Street to Grant Street. There's only two people that will really be affected with that. One's the bus, the city bus line, and the other is the Camille's, the construction company there, both of which are, are being worked with in order to come up with some alternative ways to get in and out of their business. But the road will be unpassable from curb to curb. They're putting in such large manholes that they'll be completely excavating the road. So that other methods of getting to and from those places is required. We held public demo hearings, hearings before this meeting. There were seventeen. I was wrong. It wasn't fourteen, seventeen houses that were presented for potential demolition. They are also on tonight's agenda for further action. The solicitor gave us a pretty good report on what's going on with our utility companies. And just to reiterate that, just very quickly, the utility companies, the water company is an example, they don't just schedule a line break. They respond to a line break when a line break happens. When a line break happens, they pretty much have to go onsite, write the in, and fix the problem. If that means tearing up the road, that means tearing up the road. They will tear up the road, they will do the repair, and they will get it back to snuff. Now, the whole issue is, is how do they report that to the city and so forth? As soon as the next working day comes, they need to come down here, report that to the city. Marvin goes up there, he inspects the work, engineering gets involved, and they make sure that the road is restored back to the city, what the city ordinance requires. And that's where our solicitor is cleaning up those ordinances to somewhat. A big reminder for everybody. Our next meeting, the third Thursday, excuse me, the fourth Thursday of the month happens following Thanksgiving. Our meeting will be on Monday the twentieth. Write that down in your, your calendar, Monday the twentieth. That will be our last meeting of the month. That was what was advertised at the beginning of the year. We read the correspondence from the Epiphany of our Lord Parish, and I really am sensitive to the problems that they're having with Evergreen and some of Ross Draver and so forth. And I don't want to make light of that by any stretch of the imagination, that those roads are pitiful. Are they the worst we have in the town? No. Are they most traveled roads in the, we have in the town? No. But they are very important roads nonetheless. That is something that, there are several different ways we might come up with doing something. There was one that was proposed as a temporary fix through one of the local pavers that presented a, a bid for something in the order of about twenty-five thousand dollars to get it paid. Our engineering basically looked at that and said, well, that's true. That would do that, but it would be something that we'd be chasing in two, three, four, five years from now, that it would not be a, a long-term solution. It would be a solution that would satisfy the immediate requirement, but maybe that's not the best way to spend the money. It was talked about last time that, that it would not fall within CDBG because there was no addresses on that street. I asked Urban Designs to take a different approach to this, to see if it would qualify as CDBG funds if you considered it to be a throughfare to the church. And they are in fact looking at that, and I expect to get a ruling back from the state in the next few days. They are, they're working on that particular, particular method. And on top of that, our city administrators have been working with D C E D to, to come up with some even more creative ways that we might get financing done to, to do some of these roads. So there's lots of different things that we're working on, trying to find out solutions for these. Are they truly the worst roads? No. But are they important roads? Absolutely. I want to put out a very special thank you to the Mon Valley Transit Authority. They're converting their fleet to C N G-powered vehicles, and they're giving away sizable amounts of diesel fluid, fuel to those people that have contracts with Mon Valley Transit Authority, of which Madison's one of which. As I understand it, we picked up several hundred gallons of diesel at no cost already, and we'll be getting more fuel in the coming days. So that's a really big thank you to the Mon Valley Transit Authority.
You're welcome.
We can thank Councilman Gregor also.
Yes, and thank you, Don, for, for bringing that to our, our attention.
Anything to help save a buck?
The city administrator, city clerk, and myself have interviewed three individuals all suitable for fulfilling the role of treasury clerk. By the same token, our treasury department has also interviewed those three people. I think that there's actually three people that are very qualified, capable of doing the job. I'll work with, with council and review the resumes, and we will, we'll try to come up with a, a potential person that we will suggest. They're all from Madison. We will come up with, or they're, they're accessible to Madison. Another thing that, just want to make sure everybody understands, it's been questioned when the, the county was going to come in, do they any kind of ware and boost mobile buildings, get rid of them? And in fact, it was even said that you talked to them, and they were not going to do it for the end of the year. Rest of my, they're gone. They're gone. They're gone. All I'm saying is, if you come to us and ask those questions, we have better connections and better, better ways to get the data. It's because there was no answer at that time. They're gone. That concludes what I had that I wanted to talk about.
Can I clarify one thing about the fuel?
Yes.
That wasn't my original idea. That idea was brought to me by a firefighter who wishes to remain anonymous, that they had this fuel that they were distributing to fire departments. And I approached Mike and Ron to see if we could possibly talk to them and have access to that fuel, save us a few dollars. And Mike did most of the footwork, I believe. And so, yeah, it wasn't my original idea. It was someone that came to me and told me about it. I don't want to take credit for something that I didn't originate.
Because Councilman Nestor's not here, unless somebody would like to read the motions, I'll just kind of break the norm and read my own motions. Okay, go for it. That's perfect. Thank you.
Motion to accept the CFS bank TAN note proposal and allow it to move to the next steps, including CFS and D C E D approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any question? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Discussion of motion to approve upcoming fundraising and outreach activities by the Civic Center of the City of Madison.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion we'd like to have on this?
I'm just curious about the vendor show.
Mm-hmm.
That's going through Julian?
Yes. He's the one promoting it, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to release the following properties for demolition, allowing thirty additional days for further action by the lien holders. Two hundred L. Equippa Avenue, twelve thirty-six Knox Avenue, four ten Twelfth Street, eleven twenty Knox Avenue, fifty-one Twelfth Street, eleven oh two Second Street, two twenty-one to two twenty-three Reed Avenue, twelve ten Highland Avenue, five thirteen Twelfth Street, ten fifty-one Knox Avenue, twelve forty-four Knox Avenue, twelve forty-two Knox Avenue, and eleven twenty-eight Knox Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I'd like to make one slight correction. I believe that's five eleven Twelfth Street, not fifty-one Twelfth Street.
Five eleven Twelfth Street.
Yeah, so just clarification of that. That was a typo.
A motion. We didn't vote on it yet.
Is any other questions or con, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to approve the lowest responsible bid received on Friday, November third, two thousand and twenty-three, for the sewer rehabilitation project Phase Three C, Mon dash two twenty, twenty-two dash zero five, and a recommendation of W C Engineering, Inc., that the contract be awarded to Municipal and Contractor Ceiling Products, I N C based upon their unit price bid of three million nine hundred and ten thousand and fifty-eight dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes. Councilman Orzynowski, would you like to give us your report?
You might get it right, buddy.
I doubt it, seriously. I get tongue-twisted every time.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars eighty-nine cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the rec, rec account in the amount of four hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the parks fund in the amount of one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars seventy-four cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the liquid fuels account in the amount of five thousand eleven dollars and ninety-six cents. All invoices are attached to this attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from line usage fund in the amount of one thousand, one thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars sixteen cents. All invoices are attached to this attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to transfer sixty-four thousand five hundred and four dollars and thirty-six cents from the general account to the payroll account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Following balances are as follows. American Rescue, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-six cents. Grant Fund, eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and seven cents. Healthcare, four thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and sixteen cents. Parks, forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Payroll, four thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Line usage, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and seven dollars and sixty-one cents. Refuge, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Debt Service, one million one hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Fire Escrow is twenty-one thousand seventy-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Liquid Fuels is one hundred and forty thousand nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. And the general fund is three hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and five cents. And Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas, would you like to give us your report?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to defer our streets report into our next meeting on Monday, November twentieth.
Okay, thank you. Nestor's not here for his report. Councilman Gregor, would you like to give us your report?
Yeah, I'll defer my report to the twentieth. However, I would like to make a couple comments about that road up there as far as Evergreen is concerned and Ross Draver. When El Grande, I believe, was one that submitted that bid, it was for like a temporary top coat. But that doesn't take into consideration the drainage issues that are up there on that road. If you could drive down that road, you'll see spots where there's big puddles of water when it rains. Well, what happens in that situation, if you put that top coat on there, in the wintertime, it's going to migrate underneath the road, and then you're going to go through, freeze, fall, cycle. fall cycle and it's just going to blow it up. And the estimate was saying between three to five years, that's if you're very fortunate, because there's a lot of water that comes down off that hill. So, as much as I would like to see that done, getting it done properly...
It's going to take some time.
Would, it's going to take some time, because it's going to need some culverts and some drainage put in there. And then it's going to need to be excavated out and they're going to actually have to put a real base in there. Because all they did back in the day was, they came through and they just top coated a red dog road with asphalt. So there's no real base up there. I would love to see that done, but to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on a temporary fix, I, I can't see.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on items related to the business, responsibility, statutes, codes, and ordinance of the City of Menneson.
My name is Peanut. I'm on forty-five Montrever Drive, Menneson, PA. I don't know if you guys received a letter from the garbage people. Each one of you guys are supposed to get a letter. We...
I gotta get it.
The refuse hasn't received a, they need to get from you guys under the code one-on-one to keep the authority from being able to obtain any grass collected as a grant. Now, the authority collected, they could apply for a grant, but without Menneson making their report available to them, then we can't. If you're just...
Are you talking about collecting grass?
No, grass.
Grass.
Actually, it's leaves, I do believe.
And it's, you attended the meeting, so you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yes.
And they haven't done that. They haven't given us their, under the code itself, they haven't given us the information to apply for a grant. Now, in the past, before my time, they got enough money to buy two trucks, one for Val Vernon and one for Menneson. So they would like to see you guys send them the, to comply with the one-on-one code. Number two, Nestor's not here, but I want to inform you guys that the garbage that took place up in, at the school, I think Teddy took care of that. He talked to some couple garbage guys and they picked up the trash. But at the end of the day, we found out, I didn't know that, even though I said, I told Nestor that you make a call, that, that didn't, he showed that picture around, you know, like he was doing a great job, but at the end of the day, that's you guys' job.
Actually, the school system has their own contract. It is not our job. It is the school system's job to contact the...
It's not our job.
That is true. It's not your job, it's not our job.
You need to tell Nestor, it's not our job. Let me finish. I didn't catch you, now, let me finish. I didn't interrupt you one time, okay?
Thank you.
So at the end of the day, it is council's job to do that, to get, accept any commercial trash, it's council responsibility. Any business trash is your responsibility. Any industrial crash, trash is your responsibility. All we do is handle the people, they own property, that's it. So before he opens his mouth up, make sure he knows what the hell he's talking about. Because I know he's stupid to begin with.
Hey, let's not get it with insults.
Peanut, I thought, I thought the conversation on that was something about at the school, though.
Yeah, that's your, that's your guys' responsibility.
Not the school is not our responsibility. The other things you said, you're correct, I'm assuming that's correct. But we do not have nothing to do with the school. If the school decided not to have a contract with you guys, nobody would pick garbage up. That's not us.
You understand what I said, right?
I understand what you said, but you said it's our responsibility for the school.
That's what it's supposed to be.
But it's not our responsibility for the school. They have their own agreement, am I correct?
That's correct.
That's, that's theirs.
So in other words, what you're telling me, that he should, Nestor shouldn't have told us that either, right?
I can't speak for what John said, unfortunately.
Well, I mean, you sat here, right?
I'm sorry?
You sat here and listened to him, right?
Well, he said he was going to get into it, he was going to find out, I make a phone call, out of a courtesy, I believe he said that. He was going to do that, but again, John's unfortunately not here.
Yeah, well, I'll catch him next...
That's reasonable.
Okay, so anyway, that's what I wanted to bring on that. Number two, what did you guys do on the viaduct? Where does the, the city stand on repair required on the viaduct?
We're trying to seek grants.
Okay, now, did you talk to anyone at PennDOT?
Yes.
And what did they tell you?
They told me that repairs would be required at some point in the near future.
Okay, PennDOT, I contacted them just as well. PennDOT sent an engineering report to you guys, which there's a binder on it, okay, which is basically to Menneson. All the repair requires stated in that report, correct? The first repair was one point eight million to bring the, the bridge to comply. It costs three point six billion dollars. At the time, when they did the report and you guys got the binder, is to replace the Now, have you submitted any paperwork for grants?
Yes.
To whom?
Well, L S A, sites, quite a number of places.
Okay, now, I noticed that there's somebody repair them holes there in the bridge.
Streets Department.
Who did it?
Streets Department.
They ain't allowed to do that.
How they not?
It has to be done by PennDOT.
The bridge is not, it's PennDOT.
It's supposed to be done by PennDOT. I talked to them just as well as you. If you talk to somebody, let me know who they are. But they're not allowed to work on any bridges. Okay, so keep that in mind. So you say you, right now, you're applying for a grant, right?
Yes.
That's good.
So, I have a question, and it may not apply, but it just popped into my head. Is the bridges are PennDOT's responsibility?
Yes.
So if that's PennDOT's responsibility, the viaduct bridge, are they responsible to repair and replace? And I don't know the answers, I'm just asking.
The city looks over the bridge and they, and they talk to PennDOT. And they look over the bridge. That's the reason they got a binder that tells you what the bridge needs to have done and how much it's going to cost. They got to apply for a grant, they never did.
I understand that, but you know how PennDOT does their five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty year plans?
Yeah.
And they inspect things like that? Is that, does anybody then know, is it on their radar or plan for something?
It's been on their radar for a long time, because the binder, you guys got it here.
Okay, I don't know anything about that.
Well, I mean, they got them here somewhere. You got to ask your mayor.
Yeah, but if, that's, that's something that's interesting, if that's PennDOT's responsibility. I mean, I never would have thought of it.
I know one thing, the city should not be working on the bridge. You could put a steel plate on it and let them repair it correctly, okay? Because if somebody falls through that, it's your ass, okay?
So Mike, is that something we can find out?
We have already done through W E C and they're working on a report also to submit.
When, when did you guys realize?
In my opinion, that would have nothing to do with PennDOT having a responsibility for a viaduct bridge. Is that true or is that not true?
I don't believe that PennDOT has the overall responsibility.
Can we get that defined? That makes sense that we have it defined.
But they do help in funding and regards to helping us with...
Well, let me ask you this, and I don't...
I think it's kind of like the traffic lights, Tony.
Once they do, we maintain.
Once they put it in and do it, then it's us to maintain.
Pretty much, yes. But we need help with the funding and that's the things that we've talked to them about because...
And W E C has been involved in...
Yes.
Several conference calls throughout, at least the last two years regarding this issue.
Regarding the viaduct issue, yes.
And then, another question is, from Grand Boulevard, between Marion to Ross Draper line, when will you address the bumps on the road? The road was paved in two thousand and eight. If you fix the bumps, you might get a couple more years from the road, okay? So when you guys plan to address that? Because I mean, all I hear here is this, I've been coming here for two years, and the, the, all I hear is the, the water line, the sewage line, okay? And the sewage line, when you really come down to it, the previous mayor started it.
Absolutely.
Okay? But you're making a big deal while the rest of the town is collapsing. There's not a goddamn road in this town that I could drive without getting out of line.
The only money that's been dedicated to road repair in the City of Menneson, for as long as I've known, is the road work that they can do with our streets department, doing cold patch and occasionally hot patch, and then the money that we have for C D B G for doing road repair. And that's really been the extent of the funds that we have available for that.
So what I'm talking between that road that I just mentioned about the bump, you guys looking into this, right?
I'm, what I'm telling you is, pay attention to the next C D B G public hearing when we're talking about the distribution of funds and make a, make a recommendation, we can put some of those funds towards that use.
I mean, when are we going to make the, you've been in office for two years.
And for two years, I've dedicated C D B G funds to fix roads.
I thought the only thing you dedicate, dedicate it to me is like the sewer department, that's it. But let me, let me finish.
Please do.
I got one more, one on the apple. Have you called Cleveland Cliff Management regarding the toxic waste, the trucks they are leaving behind in Donor Avenue, First Street, and Scootamaker?
I've been in contact with Randy Sheldon of Cleveland Cliffs, he's the general manager there. He follows very specific guidelines and requirements as established by D E P. If he's infracting upon any of those things, then I will make that known to him.
Well, let me ask you this question. I know a little bit about, you know, I worked in, inside that plant, not as a worker, as a contractor, okay? So all we want them to quit making dust and buy the right equipment to keep the dust down in that end of the wood, number one. Number two, if we want to get into it, there's a whole bunch of dust and they just offer, I think they just offer Clerton Mill a couple billion dollars, and they can't buy a two-hundred-thousand-dollar piece of equipment to make Menneson better?
I think that maybe it would be appropriate sometime in the near future to have a public, one of our public town halls, to have him come over here and describe to you all the things he does to fight pollution, all the investment that they've made to reduce the dust and so forth.
You talked to him about that, right?
Absolutely, I have.
So in other words, if we get, look, I'm all for work, I'm all for jobs, I'm all for the people that work there. Don't get that wrong. I'm also, I need to be talked to them face to face, that they got a billion dollars, over a billion dollars to purchase Clerton. And Clerton paying out of their ass, okay, in pollution, and I'm sure as hell, Menneson gets polluted too.
Actually, that's, that's a good point to make, that first off, Menneson has pollution control devices that Clerton does not. And I know this for a fact, because I've got sons and stepsons working at both plants. And I know exactly what's going on in those plants. There are far straight, more stringent requirements...
I just, I just got, got to let you, I got to cut you off, listen. I was a rep for those, both of those plants at one time.
Things have taken place over the last few years.
I worked with the steel workers, the staff for twenty-five fricking years.
When was the last time you worked for them?
Okay?
When was the last time you worked for them?
Pardon?
When was the last time you worked for them?
When the last time I worked for?
When was the last time you were over in Cliff's yard, working with them?
Down here?
Yes.
Champagne was in charge.
That's what I'm saying.
Eleven years ago.
That's what I'm saying, since, since Randy Sheldon has taken over, five years ago, there has been a tremendous investment in reducing pollution in Menneson.
And I got one more for you. Now, I know, look, you got pigeons every place you go, right? You got rats every place you go, right? People that chirp. Now, I know you guys painting a real bad picture for money for the end of the year that we may not have, okay? But you know, there's, there's money coming in the work. I just don't want the people in Menneson to be fooled, like, you know, like we're, we're going to run out of cash, because they're going to come over and pull you out from the state level to the representative state level. So they keep painting a bad picture, but at the end, they're going to come out and say, look, look what we got, we got some money from the state. I just want you to know that people that work for them tell us that. So if you understand, do you understand what I said? Because sometimes you guys say, you know, that I don't know what I'm talking about. I just want you to know that we know the money's coming to get you out of the hole.
Good.
We just want you to know, no surprises.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll, I'll follow it up on the viaduct next month.
I'd like to clarify a couple of things that you did say, though. First off, it's leaves that, that the Refuge Authority is wanting to collect.
Pardon?
It's leaves, not grass, but leaves. In fact, when I made the comment, they, I said grass, they said, well, only if it was combined with leaves. But I did talk to our, our streets department, and they are in fact trying to come up with a way to quantify the amount of leaves that come out of City Park, as an example, that they get, they were telling me, and I forget the exact number, seven truckloads per day for several days that they've collected leaves out of City Park. But they didn't know that they needed to report those. They're trying to get some records together now to provide to the Refuge Authority for how much leaves that they've actually removed. So we are actively paying attention to what you guys are saying, and we're actively trying to, to, to come up with the numbers for you, so that's it.
Let me clarify something too, that since you brought that up, I understand, I say grass, it's leaves that we're talking about.
Yes.
You also made it clear in our meeting that you were not going to hire any additional people. We don't want to put any additional burden on the people that work in the city.
Well, they've always removed leaves.
Let me finish, let me finish. I didn't cut you out, but let me finish, okay? So I, we said to you then, you need to hire somebody to actually do that job, and you say you're not hiring. That's what you said, but those people that are working there now, if you looked at the city of Menneson as a whole, looked like shit.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way.
Because, you know why? Because we don't have enough people that are working in the damn city. We went from 13 or 14 people to 5 or 6.
Well, when we get this windfall of money, maybe we can hire some people.
You get the grant, you get a truck, hire somebody that handles that.
Alright, thank you.
And the other part is, I'm gonna bring one more on it. You keep saying that you cannot replace or appoint somebody in the Refuge Authority because nobody applies. Correct? Two years I've been saying that. Do you know, correct? Teddy Erha is gonna be leaving, his term is up in two months, and I told you reappoint him.
Well, we got that only today.
You know what you said? You still have to apply, nobody else had to apply, including me.
We did not know, we did not receive.
And you say you gotta work together with you guys?
Thank you.
You don't wanna work with us. So I want you to know that.
Q and A here. What happened to the boat launch? We made a big deal that it was in jeopardy. In the last two months, nobody's talking about the boat launch. So what happens if something breaks away and causes a big problem in the river? What's going on with the boat launch?
That's a good question, Ernie, I'll try to answer it. Very simply, we've contacted the Army Corps of Engineers. When did I bring that up, over a year ago? And they haven't gotten back to us yet, and we really can't do anything without them okaying and telling us what we can do. I know Mike is trying to contact them on multiple occasions, they say we'll get back to you, and they don't.
Who's the person that you're contacting?
You'd have to ask Mike that question.
Their executive director.
When was the last time you talked to them?
About a month and a half ago.
Ernie. You should be on it every two weeks.
Funding is, is the key here to try to help with that project. And, you know, you're not gonna get it from the city, so we're working with them to put together the plan to do that.
You mean, they don't have funds to help out?
They can go for funds and work with us to bring funds to the table, but we need more of their help to do it. So we're working with Senator Casey's office now to help with that part. And I can probably give you a better report in the next few weeks on what they're coming up with, with funding for that particular project. It takes some time, Ernie, because it's a, it's a huge effort to correct.
Okay, and this Urban Designs in Homestead. How often have you been in touch with them?
Probably weekly.
Weekly, how comes we're not getting any money from them?
We do, that's CDBG funds.
How much do they brought in so far?
They bring about $300,000 a year.
Can't you get more?
No, we get what the state gives us.
Okay, then we got this other issue here. You wanna knock down 14, 17 homes now. Where's it coming from?
That is art money from the county.
How much do you have? Because you posted back in the winter last year that you're gonna get $4 million out of the 12 million?
I said it would be approximately that, and yes.
Okay, how, how much did we get so far?
Well, we've gotten rid of something close to 80, 80 structures in Menneson thus far.
How much money is that?
That's their numbers, I don't, they don't report those to me.
Then how could you tell us that you're gonna get $4 million?
I didn't say, I said it would be approximately $4 million bucks.
Don't you keep the tax?
And I don't get, I don't get the money, they, they administer that project.
The reason is, we gotta know how much, so then we know how much money you got to knock out the rest of the buildings.
What we have is 400 homes, 400 blighted structures in Menneson.
But you're not gonna get them all down.
We're gonna get as many as we can before they run out of money.
Well, how much money you got left before it runs out?
I really couldn't tell you.
Can you find out?
Probably not.
Why?
Because it's their money, not my money.
If it's their money, then what are you dealing with them for?
We give them a list of properties we want demolished, they, they issue contracts, they pay contractors, they're demolished. What more could you want?
Figures.
Why?
Why, so then you know how much money you may be able to ascertain from them.
We're not ascertaining a single penny, understand that, we get zero from them. They will spend something in the neighborhood of about $4 million on us.
Okay, do you have any more money from the art, you know, from the COVID?
We have some money, yes, it was reported earlier.
How much money, Tony, excuse me, how much money we got left from the art, the COVID?
$237,000.
Okay, so what we're gonna do with them, I mean, we got roads to repair, how comes we're not using them?
Well, winter's coming for one. Two, we wanna use that money as smartly as we possibly can for everybody in the city of Menneson.
Okay, smartly, define smartly, what are you gonna use it for?
Well, that's a good question. Do we, if you go out, if you go and you pick one or two places to outsource to get some paving done, you'll suck it up faster than anything. Does, does it make sense that as we've talked before in the past, that we consider buying some used equipment that we can do ourselves and take our time and actually do sections of an area of a paving? I don't know what that answer is, but we've tried to make sure that the money is there that we can still use it for a good reason. We don't wanna blow it on anything, because it's, it's. I didn't say that, I said we wanna choose a good reason. And that how you go about that reason is the difficult part. It takes money and it takes manpower to do that kind of work. You'd be surprised how fast a mini little paver might be, or something of that nature, or.
And they're not even hiring anybody. That's right.
Well, I'm not saying that. It's a discussion. No.
Or trade them.
Like to train our street department how to do something.
Yeah.
We have replaced them.
What I mean, there's two vacancies.
No.
Where? Is there a vacancy?
Seven.
And how many openings do we have?
Zero.
So I'm not missing, missing your point. You're saying, you just said that we're not replacing people, we absolutely did. We replaced everybody, matter of fact, we brought.
I, I think, I think. I think what they're talking about was probably 10, 12 years ago. They had 12 individuals working.
And, and I, that would be fantastic, but 10, 12 years ago, we had more than 6,700 people in the city paying taxes and bringing tax income too.
I'm aware.
We've lost a lot of people since back then. Lot more than 1,000. And it's not going in the right direction unfortunately, it's going in the wrong direction. And, and whether it's the mayor, or someone on this council, or anybody, I know it's been brought up many times, that there's a part where you're going to have the people in the city that pay taxes at a point, and where what the city brings in, there's gonna be a cross-section pretty one day. I don't know when that day is, but when it happens, we're gonna be on the negative side. And we're not gonna be able to change it.
So I'd like to, to make a comment here real quick. First off, I don't, I'm not the US Census, and it's really hard to quantify how many people are in town. But I am hearing from numerous sources that we're getting more people coming into town right now today than we've had in a long time.
Low economic people.
Not, not.
They're not productive people.
No, that's not, that's not true at all, that's not true at all.
Okay, then ask Jerry, how much more money we got in compared to last year?
Did you, did you hear what he said? We have met the budgeted amount for today. We're not even at the end of November, and yet we've already collected all the money we're gonna get for.
Tony told us last meeting that we're gonna be short $192,000.
And we might be. That's how tight it is.
Well, why is it tight if we got all these productive people you're telling me are coming in?
Well, it takes time for the people to do, but yes, there are people buying property, and there's deals going on.
Deals, yeah, but I don't know about being productive.
Product, well, and we won't know for 10 years when the US Census runs again.
Oh, so we're gonna wait 10 years to find out if you're doing a good job or not?
I'm just saying, that's what the census runs. Exactly, 2030. Seven years.
And half the public would be gone by then.
Any, anything else?
Yeah, one more thing, are you doing anything to bring industry into this city?
Desperately trying.
Yeah, well, who, I mean, we're knocking on the door.
There is a couple of deals going on right now, I can't disclose what they are, they are very, very much in the works.
They're not, they're not retail stores, I mean, you're bringing industry?
No, I'm bringing in some industry. And, and it will become very public in the very near future, but I can't say what it is right now. Industry. I can't say right now, I can't say right now. We have coding, we have code laws, we know where it can go and where it can't.
Can you give us a Christmas present and tell us?
I hope so.
Some of the names?
I hope so.
So we got something to look forward to.
Maybe, maybe by, maybe by Christmas, we will have, be able to disclose some of this.
And you're gonna throw a Christmas party too?
Thank you.
My name's Willie Bersick, I live at 914 Vine Street, Menneson, PA. Okay? I own seven properties.
Okay?
Okay? These houses that you're talking about, people's buying, okay? Me and my boy is in partners, but he works as a union painter, I am retired. Okay, this is what keeps me busy. Okay? The first thing is, I don't know where you got the ordinance officer, because he don't know the ordinance, okay? I went online, whoever said that there's an ordinance stating, I'm up on Indiana now putting a roof on, ripping one off, putting one on, it started to rain, okay? I don't know his real name, but Yo-Yo comes up past. He said, get off that roof, there's an ordinance, you ain't lied to be on a roof, okay? While it's raining. I looked at him, I told him, get up the damn road, okay? That's the first thing. Now, we'll get to Marvin. And I keep asking Marvin about this property around mine, okay? From 640 10th Street to Vine, there's a corner house. It's been empty for five, going on six years, okay? There's a stop sign there. The grass is so high going up to the next street. I keep asking Marvin, check into it, I'll stop or I'll call you, okay? Five years now, nothing. He don't keep his word, okay? Okay? I don't know whoever taught this Yo-Yo character, but he don't, because I got online, okay? And I checked it, me and my boy. Now, we've come to you, we've come to Marvin, we had meetings with you, if you remember, several of them, okay? I keep asking him about this house, it's number two, okay? On Scootermaker. I own four, 12, and I'm trying to get into the next one. All right, the lady across the street at, across the street from them three, to N1, number two, okay, Scootermaker, there's people going in and out, okay? She grabbed me one day here and told me what was going on, okay? Talked to Marvin to see if he can lead us in the right path of purchasing it, okay? The grass also over there is knee-high. I just keep getting to run around and to run around. You know? All my taxes are paid, all the garbage fees are paid, all my properties are up to snuff. What's the problem? I got, like I said, between 640 10th Street and Vine Street, there's three lots, okay? For the last five years, I've been putting up, me and my neighbor and the people across the street, the old mailman Bill, okay? We're getting, we've been getting rats, we've been getting mice, we've been getting every creature imaginable coming out of there. Plus the one on the corner of 10th and Vine. I asked Marvin, okay, I'll check into it, but on that three-way corner, there's a stop sign. Go down Vine and see if you can find it. All the trees, and I talked to Marvin about it, I sit on my porch in the morning, drink my coffee, okay? And I've, I've seen so many people go through that stop sign. I holler at them, what are you hollering, they stop, what are you hollering about, I said, didn't you see the stop sign? No! So I asked him if he could get it cut, because there's two children beside my house, okay? And this lady works, she's a single parent. One of them kids get hit, all right? We're in big trouble. The other thing is, is they played at like demolition derby, coming down, coming down Maple on the 10th Street, okay? If any of yous know, I didn't have power from quarter after seven in the morning, okay, until 3:30. Lady come down there, okay? Flying, snapped the pole and hit the, the wall because the house was sitting on the very top, which is vacant. I try, me and my boy's been trying to buy houses, okay? And fixing them up and renting them out so you could get revenue in. But Marvin, also you mayor, putting us off, okay? So now, we're starting to buy houses, we, I got three in Chalora, by the way. Now we're in Donora. We went in there, and I'm gonna tell you what, it was like we're Santa Claus, they love us. We're in the, we already bought a duplex, we already bought a three-story, okay? And now we bought a proposal in for another one. You wanna run us out, that's fine.
Never intended to run you out. First off, every time you've come in to me and you've given me an address, I've told you who the owner was of that property. Every single time.
Okay, now hold it. What could be done about it?
Well, that's up to you, I am not a real estate agent.
I didn't say that.
I'm saying, I will give you the name and the address of who owns that property. Now you can contact that person, and you can see if you can buy that property. Now, if you buy that property and it, and it has back taxes on it, we have a tax forgiveness board that you can go through.
I understand that, I got all the information on that. What I'm talking about is now, with the rats and all that, with the high grass. If I left my grass high, what would you do?
I would get upset.
What would Marvin do?
He would probably.
I'd be dying here at the magistrate.
Let me finish, let me answer you before we get too far off base.
Okay.
Marvin is not the one that's gonna go out there and mow the lawn, that's our parks department. They're the ones that have the, the equipment to mow the lawn. Now, if there is a place, and I wrote down these addresses here, I will contact our streets department tomorrow and see if they can get one of their tractors out there, well, tomorrow's a holiday.
They used to do it four years ago.
Tomorrow's a holiday, so it's gonna be next week. But if it's a street sign.
I wrote it down for the street sign, is it corner of 10th and Vine?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I wrote it down.
And the other one's catty corner, going up Maple, in between, in between 640. Or no, 900 to 1204 Maple Avenue. I don't, I think it's like three lots.
We can't mow lots.
Huh?
We can't mow lots that belong to somebody else.
Okay, now, why can't you get ahold of them? And if they don't do it, why can't you put a lien on the property?
There is a whole court process that takes place when you do that, and in fact Marvin most likely is doing exactly what you say. He will cite the people, they go, they don't pay the.
I talked to him, you know what he tells me? He sends them registered letters, but they don't pick them up.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so what do you do then?
It goes to the judicial, it goes to the magistrate court, the magistrate court.
Will send the constable or the sheriff.
And you will find.
The serving papers.
No, they won't serve, they won't do it.
No?
Because they're so backlog, we've been trying that route for years.
So I gotta deal with these rats and that, which I've used every kind of bait imaginable. Because I was told that the city is not allowed to give me bait, and they are not allowed to bait. So I gotta live with these rats and mice.
We can try to trap, if you give us the addresses, we'll have, they have an outside firm come up and put traps.
In my kitchen, there's two holes in the corners where them rats ate through it in the last two years, okay?
Sir, excuse me, you, you say you can't get bait from the city?
That's right.
When did this stop?
I don't know.
We still have bait available, do we not?
So I go up, so I got the tractor supply and spend.
I know people that have gotten the actual containers taken and put in by vacant houses. They just called down, right, they called down.
Have you been down to see Rodney Freeman at the city garage?
No.
Go see Rodney.
I'll do that first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
But why should, why should I suffer in my living room? They got every corner like this, eating on my corners.
I understand.
Mayor, I have.
I mean. And I just keep getting a run around and a run around, that's why we're starting to go to Donora.
Is there any other locations you have you'd like us to look into?
Yes, please.
Mr. Bersick, you said the stop sign is on a corner of 10th and Vine, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Coming down the hill.
That's the lot that the city did do for a couple of years when they got stopped.
Okay, but that's where it's at, okay, I'm gonna talk to Rodney tomorrow, tell you get up and cut around that stop sign.
I'm about the house on the corner.
Give her the address of that one too, if, as long as it's blocked and a stop sign.
640.
Is it blocking a stop sign?
No, no.
No, he's, he doesn't have a stop sign.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Yeah, it's 640 10th and Vine, right on the corner.
That's where the stop sign is.
Electric and everything on in there.
We'll do the best we can, that's for sure.
They just picked up and went to Florida.
That's the problem with law enforcement.
Marvin, they check it out, he comes back and says, I can't help you. I don't know who owns it.
One, one clarification though, sir, and it doesn't make, make anything better or worse, but you said about for five years Marvin hadn't got back to you. Marvin wasn't code officer for five years.
Pardon me?
He hasn't been code officer.
I know that, I know that. But before the other gentleman from Whitehall was here, okay? I mentioned it to him, he didn't do nothing, then when Marvin came back, got on him again, then we went to the mayor.
I'm sure they'll try to work something out.
I mean, we, we wanna bring revenue in to Menneson, but I ain't getting no help from anybody down here. I just keep giving me to run around and to run around, I'm about ready to pick up, okay? And start selling these rentals. and start selling these rentals and pick up and move to Chalora or Monessen, or I mean, DeNora. You know, I mean, it's crazy. I ain't getting no help. And I keep finding, I want to buy that house, and I want to buy number two on Studamaker. The grass is that high. The garage, somebody went through it a few years ago. It's been vacant for four years.
And that doesn't mean that we can sell it to you.
No, I ain't saying that. I'm saying, lead me in the right direction.
And as I told you, you give me an address, I will give you who owns that piece of property, and the last known address, every time, always have to, every single person.
Okay. I'm gonna keep you to your word, Mayor.
No problem.
Okay. Now, that's two, Studamaker. It's right on the corner. I own the other two. Like I said, I own four, and I own twelve.
I would be more than happy to.
Can I ask a question? This is a genuine question concerning him. You know, what he said is true. The Marvin said that register letter, and then they drop it. They're done. But if there's a house, if my house had grass this high, and they come over and told me either I cut it, or they'll do whatever they're gonna do, right? I have to cut it. But if there's no one living there in the house, because this house is in Monessen, you can't see the house. Right across the Sunoco Station, there's a house there. You can't even see it with grass. So whenever you tell him, contact the people, so that he can deal with them. But the grass situation should be handled by Marvin and Yo-Yo. That should be handled by them. And if they have to have someone cut it and then send those people to deal, that's the way it gotta go. Otherwise, the city will look like shit like it doesn't say.
Well, Peter, let me ask you a question. I'm not disagreeing with you, but here's my question to you. Let's go up at Studamaker and Third, the parking lot, next to where the mayor's business used to be, okay? You with me so far?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know, remember the name of what that big building is that's right behind this back? What is it?
McGrewer.
McGrewer Building, okay? The roof is totally collapsed. There's not a window in it, okay? I would love to get rid of that eyesore and do something. That person that owns it is in New York City and doesn't care, and will not turn around. And I know this going back to administrations, trying to get that person cited. There's nothing you can do. You can send everything you want at them, and if they don't answer and they're out of state, you're gonna find out that probably most of those people are out of state that own that property.
No.
No.
Because if they don't pay the taxes, then there's a process.
And it takes years.
And you can take it, but so we.
Those properties are probably in some form at the county already.
Let me explain the McGrewer Building real quick, because that is a building. Well, that's fine. I'll let you say it in just a second. The McGrewer Building falls outside of the eight oh five two and eight oh five four zones. The county will not demo that building. That's the first problem. I went to Senator Ward, and Senator Ward will give us some money through DCED to demo that building as soon as it gets through the budget process in Harrisburg, which is not still to this day been finalized. It's normally finalized in the summer, so there's some hangup with the monies. But that will go away.
The point is, these owners of these buildings cannot be found, or don't want to be found.
No, that would be trespass.
So we just have to deal with it, so we can watch the rats and the mice and all them, and then it's on my expense?
No, no.
Okay?
It eventually gets so bad that.
Oh, it's bad?
Yeah, it's bad, but you don't know what bad is.
I know what bad is whenever my German Shepherd, okay?
I understand.
Stands there in the morning with a mouse or a rat in his mouth.
The best thing that could happen.
And I ain't bugging you.
The best thing that could happen to those properties is to get them submitted to the demo board and get them demolished. Now, it's a vacant piece of property, and you can do something with it, if they're that bad.
Well, like I said, the ones on Maple, I don't know if it's two lots or three lots, okay? I mean, they're all coming over. That whole corner there, we're getting rats, mice, but I say, well, come on down with me. Nope, I ain't getting involved. I ain't getting involved.
We can actually have traps set up. We've done it in the past. We've done it in the past when the rat situation got really bad in this part of the town. We can do that. We can set traps up, and if it's coming from there, we have an outside firm we deal with. And they'll bring the boxes, and they'll trap them, and they'll take them away. We can have that looked into for you. As far as cutting, as far as cutting grass.
Do you have all the house numbers?
Yeah, if you can give Lois the house numbers.
So that we can, when they get the box, they can bring the box. You have the actual house numbers to the houses you're talking about?
Yeah, they will. They'll take it away.
We don't, one of the things we don't, and I'll be honest with you, try to use, is the bait. And here's the reason why. We don't like to do the bait, for many reasons. Okay, dog, our stray dog may get in there and can die. A cat could go over there. There's even chance of an infant strolling over there and thinking it's candy and picking it up. So we try not to do any bait at all. None. No, we get an outside firm that actually will come in with no problem, and they'll set the traps up around the house, the perimeter, and the location. And then they'll trap it, and then they'll take it away. But we don't do bait. We don't do bait, because we don't want the humane society coming after us, that's for sure.
I'm sorry. I'm done.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
You know, no, you're fine. You're fine. I've been gone three years, and I was bored tonight. I have Anthony Potassia, forty-nine, Overhill Drive, Monessen. And, you know, I'm coming back. I was working out, and I said, you know, Facebook came up. Ron Moser's Live at the city building here. So I'm gonna come down, because I'm off tomorrow. So I haven't been here three years since COVID. You know, I'm just thinking, and I'm listening, and I'm paying attention. Karen's back here getting ready to come in, and her eyes are lighting up. She says, I don't know what I got into, huh?
We could have told her.
But anyways, you answered one of the questions. There's three hundred thousand now in CDBG funds. Now, when Rosalie and I was here, there was probably about four hundred fifty thousand in CDBG funds. When Ted Harha was here, there was probably six hundred thousand. So you see the cycle going down, but everything else is going up, okay? So now, how do you make this money work? So just a thought here, while I'm sitting there thinking, I'm thinking to myself, we're talking about roads. Because the roads are terrible. And I even made the mistake of when you pave a road, if you do it just in overcoat, a lot of times, three, four, or five years later, that road's back to where it is. You almost have to do a total reconstruction on some of these roads. So three hundred thousand dollars coming in in CDBG funds. There's all these infrastructure plans that were passed federally. So you're getting money from the county. The state has money. There's all this money for demolition. Lot of it demolition, bridges, that type of stuff. But out of that three hundred thousand in the CDBG funds, what do you break it down into? Because you have a line usage fee, so you're getting sewage money and sewage projects done. The parks, there's been a lot of grants and things going on there, okay? I would take that whole three hundred thousand, do an amendment, and use it for a road, okay? Take a road every year that needs to be paved, total reconstruction. Take all three hundred thousand unless you use it for celery. You may be breaking some down for celleries. But take as much as you can, use that for roads, because you have demolition money coming in. Now, you've got grant money coming in for demolition, too.
Do you realize, no, one mile of road cost to have it properly?
I'm sure it's up.
Do you know what it is?
Because oil's up.
Do you know what it is? Guess.
Twenty-five thou?
How about a million, almost?
Wait, what you're saying? Repeat that?
Per mile.
Oh, for one mile?
One mile. It costs you a million dollars to do progress.
Tony, I said that before. You're incorrect. It's not a million bucks. Okay, because I already priced it one mile. I priced about, you know, black pop coming.
Okay, come on. Let's keep this, let's not get into an argument. First off, to answer your question, the vast majority of the CDBG money is used every year for roads. There is a formula that they use, that you have to use some of it for other things besides just roads. You can't do one hundred percent to roads. It's a big.
Salary, yeah, there's a little formula.
It's not even salaries. It's other things that you can do.
I just remember when I was here, we were able to make a lot of modifications and shift money around and take the very basic minimum for the other stuff and use the bulk of it for roads.
And we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars set aside for Third Street, which will be done in the springtime as soon as we can get the weather warm enough to do it.
Right, and you're always gonna be behind, because the tax revenue's not coming in. Like you said, you got people leaving, okay, but yet everything's going up, and you've still got to demolish all these houses and pave a lot of roads. But at least you've got money coming in for demolition.
We're lucky right now insofar as the demolition money's going through ARP and the sewage is going through line usage. Is there any other comments? Do I have a motion adjourned? Is there a second?
What's that?
Do you want a second adjournment?
Second.
All in favor of a adjournment? Aye. This meeting is adjourned.